Any discussion? No discussion, by a show of hands please. Thank you. Agenda item number five is Subcommittee Reports. There are no reports at this moment. Agenda item number six would be the Chair's Announcements. I have a few this evening. First of all, as we all know, that the Registry of Motor Vehicles has been out there basically saying that they're looking to close the Southridge site. So, I want to read a letter that was drafted up in the Town Manager's office to try to be proactive about what we do in this community and then all the councilors, if they would choose, to sign it off so we can present this to our Senator and so on and so forth. So, I will read you the letter. It says, "Dear Governor Patrick, Register Caporalini, Senator Moore, and Brewer Representative Durant, the town of Southbridge was deeply disturbed by the recent news of another effort to consolidate Registry of Motor Vehicles office, specifically the elimination of the Southridge office. The town of Southridge in cooperation efforts with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, including the Governor's Office and the Legislature, worked cooperately to draft a 10-year lease agreement to continue to operate the RMV in Southridge. This agreement for the RMV facility had no rent payments for the first two years and undermarket rental amount for the remaining balance of the lease. The town undertook this lease partnership to provide RMV regional customer service to not only its residents but also to the residents of south-central New England Core. We are perplexed by the Commonwealth's efforts to close the Southridge RMV, which has proven -- proven, excuse me, to be an essential element to the area. Three years ago, in an effort to retain the RMV, a community interest group collected 6,000 signatures in a representation of approximately 50 surrounding communities that did, in fact, use the Southridge RMV facility. It is also noted that some of the originators, that our local insurance agencies and auto dealerships found the location of the RMV facility to be a sus -- excuse me, sophisticated benefit to the business as it allowed them to provide additional registry services to clientele, saving the customer both time and money. We also believe that the requiring residents of south-central New England Core to travel into the city of Worcester is not sufficient method of the customer service. Our facility, our facts of regional centers that provide a high level of quality service to the residents of the community who have need to frequent the centrally-located facility. The RMV also provides, in inexperienced new drivers, a pleasant first trip hassle-free, professional welcome to the Commonwealth RMV, in experience that cannot be transfixed through a computer or an inner-city RMV facility. We also offer the convenience of walking distance for residents of Southridge, free parking with no intimidation factor for elderly and rural customers who quite honestly dread going into a large-city environment. Therefore, we believe it is imperative that the Registry of Motor Vehicles remain in its current Southridge location with a feasible lease term, not only for the residents of the South -- of Southridge but for every -- everyone in every business that has utilized the facility in the south-central New England area. We appreciate the consideration you will give to this request and hope that you'll find the best interests of all to keep this RMV facility operational. Sincerely, Christopher Clark, Town Manager." As you know, we are going to take this serious. This is just the first step. I think it's a very proactive step. I know Counselor Clements, Mr. Collette, was very instrumental of getting many, many signatures and it is a -- an important part of Southridge, keeping that not only for Southridge residents but for other people in the surrounding towns and stuff. So, does anyone have any questions or anything on this? Counselor Pappalpala? Yeah, you have to share the mic for now.
I would just like to thank everybody who's already taken steps to work on this issue. This is a very serious issue and I think we should fight this tooth and nail and do everything in our power. I'm very interested in adding a sentence to this letter to say that I find it kind of discriminatory for the Registry of Motor Vehicles to just say that everybody can go and make certain transactions online because there is a large number of people who do not feel comfortable doing these kinds of transactions online. We have a very large population within this town that does not have a computer in their home or does not necessarily feel comfortable using technology to the level that you would be required to do, to use the RMV website to do these transactions. And I think it may be additionally beneficial when speaking to the Governor's Office to include a line about how certain people become disenfranchised when required to use the Internet for customer service. I think that may speak to him on a certain level. So, just to -- if it's possible to add a sentence, I can come up with specific language if that's -- yeah. I just need a second.
You all set, Counsel?
Yes, thank you.
Counselor Clements?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also, I agree wholeheartedly with Counselor Pellequin. That was one of our focus points in the past where they continually said that everybody could just go on the Internet and do what they wanted to do. But as we found out, obviously, that hasn't happened or they wouldn't be doing this big push again, to continue to say the same mantra they said four years ago, actually. And that, I just wanted to, a couple of things, having been on that effort then, it was the beginning of my first year, which would be four years ago, and we collected approximately 8,000 signatures. So, I just think since we had it and that was the data collected, I think 8,000, is it better than six? And I'd like to correct, have you correct that if possible? And it was four years ago so that we can be as accurate as possible in terms of when the effort started so that they don't come back and think we don't know what we're talking about. I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Manin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to see also, maybe somewhere in this letter, many times we hear from the state that Southridge is a central location for many communities. So, I would like to see that incorporated in this letter somewhere, that we are a central location for many communities. Too many times we hear that we are centrally-located, so we must emphasize that, I believe, in this letter. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Nicola?
I just have one point to make. The registry has a tendency to talk out of both sides of its mouth. One of the first things you need to know for anybody who hasn't experienced this already, since they no longer put a stamp on an envelope and send you a reminder that your license needs to be renewed, if you don't keep an eye on your license to see that, it does need to be renewed at a certain time and it expires, you cannot redo your license online. You have to go to the registry to do it. I know this for a fact, it's happened to me. So, that's one little thing that I'm just suggesting, if in fact they do this, you may want to make some kind of a big sign in your house to remind yourself that when your certain birthday comes along, to make sure that you renew your license because if it's expired, you cannot renew it online. The other thing I just wanted to make mention of, in case anybody hasn't seen any of the information prior to tonight about this, it's not only Southbridge that's being targeted. What they intend to do is, I believe it's six regional offices, will be all that the RMV is going to offer to the people of Massachusetts. It's not just Southbridge. So, it's kind of disturbing that we're going to have to go through this again. Again, they carefully worded their article in that they're just looking at this, but basically what they're trying to do is see if they can kind of slide this under the door and if enough people don't pay attention to it, they're going to push it forward. So, the more people that write to the registry or let their Senator or state representative know about this, the better. I know that Senator Moore has already addressed this and will continue to monitor it, but I just wanted to let people know that it is not, even if you have a computer, it's not that simple. You can't just go online and get everything that you need from the registry. Thank you.
Thank you. What I'll do is I will bring these back to the Town Manager's Office. Next meeting, we'll make the adjustments. Next meeting, we'll just review it quickly and then we'll submit it. So, we'll put it on the agenda just to fix it and tidy it up a little. I appreciate it. Go ahead, Counselor Clements.
Just one more thing. I was just thinking, we had a registry news bulletin that was one of the ways that I got the information. It came to me from a business, local business was very concerned, and I know we all have a copy. Perhaps we can get this posted on the website so other people can see exactly what they're talking about here. I know this is just their proposal, but it's four pages and it seems pretty complete, like they've spent a lot of time on it already. So, hopefully, we're not behind the eight ball as we were in the past. I think we're being more proactive. So, if we could get this posted, then people can understand what it is they're planning on doing. Thank you.
Thank you, and I want to thank you for getting that in everyone's packet. Okay, moving on. Next thing is I will announce the subcommittees, the chairs in the subcommittee, councilors that follow, and then I would ask the chairs of each subcommittee to please be very proactive. As we all know, last election, the chairman of the subcommittee now gets to pick its citizen's member. We did state last meeting to, if there's any interest in the public to sitting on these, please submit through Town Manager's Office, but we do have to be proactive and move forward so we can get the business of this community moving. So, General Government, Kathy Nicola will be Chair, Conrad Vandal, and Sean Moriarty. Department of Public Works will be Chair, Conrad Vandal, Amelia Pellequin, and Espin Carrasco Jr. EHS Chair is Dali Maikuchi, Denise Clements, Minique Manor. Protections of Person and Property will be Chair, Sean Moriarty, Catherine Nicola, and Esper -- Esperon Carrasco Jr. Planning and Development Chair would be Denise Clements, Counselor Minique Manor, and Counselor Amelia Pellequin. So, if all the chairs could please be proactive so we can continue, we have a lot of work to do this year, so I want to hit the ground running if possible. Anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for announcing that. It's always great to know ahead of time. I do have one question. Is it the Chair of the Subcommittee that does the choosing for the citizens' members or is it the Subcommittee who takes a vote? Because I was under the impression for, with the charter changes, that it was up to the Subcommittee. It went through Subcommittee and the members of the Subcommittee voted on the...
And that is correct. That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, it'd be the committee members getting together and deciding who they want and moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Also, moving on, the Vice Chair did do a schedule for the next, where we have our meeting scheduled for the, until all the way up until December. I'm going to ask the Town Manager to please post that on our website so everyone knows the schedule. And what we'll do is, maybe late November, we'll plan for, from January to June. So, everyone should know their schedule in advance and let's, due to an emergency, we will get the word out to everyone of the cancellation. Yes?
I know that it's not a particularly large number of meetings. It may be useful to people who want to jot them down in their calendar if we could read the list.
Certainly.
Okay, thank you.
It'll be August 5th and August 19th. And that meeting will be in this room, the PIAPEE Room. We will have our summer meetings here, but then we will shift over to the council chambers in September. It'll be September 9th, September 23rd, October 7th, October 21st, November 4th, November 18th, December 2nd, and December 16th. If anyone sitting in the audience wants just to look at this afterwards, feel free, it'll be right up here. You're welcome. The, I have just two more things. We, I do have in back, I will present it to everyone, the audit has been completed. I do have it in back here. I will pass it out to everyone. The auditor himself will be here at the next meeting. So, what I would ask the councilors, I will pass out all the information so you have a whole week to look it over, review, write down any questions that you have. He will do his presentation. And I just ask the councilors to kind of refrain for the next week until the presenter actually does his presentation. It's, I just feel that's the right thing to do, so just look it over, absorb it, write down any questions you have, and that will be on our next meeting agenda, the audit report. And last but not least, we will be, once we get our subcommittees moving forward, we, when we're wrapping up our years and we talked about goals and objectives, so I just want all the councilors to start thinking about that for the Town Manager, doing our goals and objectives. So, they'll be coming really quick now. Once we get our subcommittees and stuff, we'll move forward on that. So, I just, I want to ask everyone to think about that. And that's all I have for announcements. Thank you. Agenda item number seven, Town Manager's Announcements.
Good evening, everyone. Just a couple of things from the Manager's Office. For any of you who travel along Route 131, that fencing, the old American optical fencing, that tall, black spears there, has been broken for quite a while. I know the manager's been working very hard with Mr. Chip Norton from Southridge Associates. He received correspondence from him on the 22nd on 722, and Mr. Norton expects to have a price for that and hopes to be completing that work within the next 30 to 45 days. I know Mr. Clark's been very anxious to get that cleaned up. Secondly, and adjacent to that area, all of that new construction that went on along Route 131 and 169 where Woodstock Road is, they are in the process of just about finishing up the heavy work there, and the community has asked that they plant 34 trees in that area. Some people had asked if that was going to, you know, kind of stay so blank-looking there. But there are a variety of trees, they will be planted in that area, but they don't expect to do that till around the beginning of September, but they will be cleaning that up. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's it.
Thank you. Agenda item number eight will be swearing-in presentations. We will go to Business Presentation, SJC Custom Drums, Michael Chapari.
Thank you very much. My name is Michael Chapari, and in the year 2000, my brother and I started a custom drum company out of our grandmother's basement in Dudley, Massachusetts, and it's 2013 now. We've grown leaps and bounds and actually, about two years ago, we moved to the town of Southridge, which was very exciting for us because I have a lot of family around here. My grandfather, Louis Chapari, had his own business, dry cleaning business here for 40 years, and got a lot of family around. My dad owns a car dealership in Dudley, Massachusetts. It's been family-owned and operated for the past 13 years and through the past, you know, decade-plus, we have employed a dozen of our close friends and family members, and we've made drums for national and worldwide acts everywhere, from the Jonas Brothers to Justin Bieber to punk bands and different kind of country bands around. So, it's been very exciting for us. And when we were looking to move, you know, we obviously had friends and family around the town of Southridge, having grown up here myself, and like I said, all my family was here. Paul, De Gregorio, and United Lands were very, you know, open-armed to us, allowing us to come to their building on Worcester Street, which was great for us. We needed more room to grow and coming from Dudley, you know, grandmother's basement, it was 1,000 square feet, employing 12 people and, you know, making a dozen drum sets a week. We needed more space. So, like I said, Paul and United Lands was very welcoming to us, and it's been great being in the town of Southridge. Community's very important to us. We've been involved in different charities and different community events around Worcester County, and we look forward to getting more involves in the town of Southridge as well. So, coming to this was exciting for me and us as well. So, yeah, you can visit us on the web at sjcdrums.com, and we look forward to more community service and events that we can do around the town of Southridge. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any councilors have any questions? Counselor Pellequin?
I just, I had no idea you were there and that's very exciting, so I'm going to give you my card. I would love to come down and check it out.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Right down the road.
Counselor Maikuchi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Congratulations, Michael. I, along with Counselor Pellequin, didn't even know that you were here. Are you open to the public at all? How do people get in touch with you if they're interested in drums?
We are a strong Internet company. We have a beautiful building on Worcester Street that we manufacture out of, and we have a showroom and we have offices and display drums and kit. You know, we've been fortunate with customers and drummers really, you know, welcoming us into the drum industry and community buying our drum sets, and we've had customers drive from Canada, Nashville, and Georgia, and really everywhere to come see our warehouse. It's been pretty exciting. We had a reality TV show about the company last year that aired like five or six episodes, so that got us a lot of national attention where people wanted to come see our warehouse and everything. For people around the town of Southridge, they're welcome to, you know, make an appointment and stop by. We're not, you know, we're not a retail store, so for insurance reasons, with our manufacturing in the back, we kind of only open up the front display office area, but people are more than welcome to come in and talk to us and see the drums that we make and check out the operation for sure. So, to do that, they can just go on our website, sjcdrums.com, and all of our contact information's right there.
Well, welcome to Southbridge, Michael. I remember your grandfather. He was very friendly with my father. The only thing I can remember as a young child is your grandfather having a monkey in the cage at the cleaners.
Yep.
So, welcome back to Southbridge and good luck. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Vandal?
Mr. Chairman, through you, this is Chapari. This is Chapari. Is this...
Sorry.
Is this one of your drums that you...
That's one of our drums, yeah. We, I brought it to present, just a, it's a copper drum that we recently made about a month ago, just as a prototype. Thank you. So, we make drums from, for every kind of artist, like I mentioned, and any kind of drum, which is how we separate ourselves from the mass drum companies. No one will do a special size or special colors. Everything's mass-produced overseas. And we, you know, like I said, my brother and I started it 13 years ago out of our grandmother's basement for the love of drums and music and customizing, you know, what we loved playing. And we can do any type of configuration, color, paint, different artists. We have painting or wood burning the drum and any material, metals, woods, acrylics, anything. So, that's really how we kind of made our stake in the industry by offering unlimited options and customer service that really you can't get from the mass-produced companies because they're not on the, on the ground level, you know, dealing with the artists on a one-on-one level. They're, they're more worried about the bottom line and the numbers where, you know, we're just kids like these guys playing our drums so we can go out on tour and really relate to them. So, that's how we've definitely built our name and had the word-of-mouth definitely help us out.
I've heard a lot of good things about your business, so keep up the good work.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
I just want to say congratulations to you, and I didn't know you were located there, and I've heard many great things. You definitely put Southridge on the map with that business, and I appreciate it.
Awesome. We appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Nine, Citizens Forum. Is there any citizens that would like to speak on something that is not on tonight's
Please forgive my earlier outburst. I'm a very jumpy person. I didn't expect him to come up behind me and start talking.
Sorry.
Before you start, just for the record, I do need your name and your address.
Your name and address.
Oh, my name and address.
Please.
Richard Snyder, S-N-Y-D-E-R, 560, Worcester Street, Apartment 2, in Southbridge.
Thank you, welcome, Mr. Snyder. Go ahead.
Okay, for quite a while, I had been attending Traffic Commission meetings at the police station, and I brought up some very important issues concerning the mergers from Mechanic onto Worcester Street and also from Foster onto, I can't think of the name of the street it goes out onto.
Onto Hooker. Central Street.
Central, that's it. I've been asking for some cement barriers that would force people to take a left turn, oh, to take a left turn. I'm not accustomed to public speaking. So, they could have a good look to see what's coming down on their left. Even tonight, as I came up Foster, a car was going out onto Central. He didn't even bother to stop or look, he just went. And that happens often. It also happens at Mechanic going onto Worcester Street. I was told at those Traffic Commission meetings that something would be done, we just have to study it. I had some, I have some photographs here. I would like to pass them around. I'll, you'll see what was, and they just recently came up. Those signs will in no way prevent accidents that could be fatal. We need to make Southridge a safer town to live in. As long as those mergers continue to exist and people just running through them without stopping or just crawling up and give a half-hearted look like you just saw me do, the danger still exists and will continue to exist as long as those barriers are not put in place. I came to use those barriers, left-hand turns rather than the merge as a result of an accident I had on October 20, 1999. I was coming back from the post office in Charlton. I remembered going right by Fallon Clinic, and then I just had some kind of a seizure or a stow or something. I came out of it at Carpenter Hill Road, but there was a car stopped with a left-turn So, I tried to go around on the right, and that wouldn't work. I saw myself headed for the end of a guardrail. It was missing out that day. I remember that day just as like it happened one minute ago. And then when I started using the mergers after the healing took place, it threw so much pain down my left arm that I had to make that right, left hand turn first so that I could bring my car at right angles to Worcester Street and also on to Central And I've been doing it that way for years. As a matter of fact, I got stopped not too long ago because I did that. I did what was safe to do. Mergers are not safe, especially when people don't use them properly, and too often, they don't use them properly.
Mr. Snyder, I have the police chief sitting on his side of me. He will try to address some of your questions that you were just pointing out.
Can you please speak, I'm having a hearing.
I have the, I have the police chief sitting right next to me. He will address some of your concerns and try to help you out with your problem. Okay?
The police chief.
It's, it's
He's gonna talk.
Oh. Can you hear me, can you hear me okay, Mr. Snyder? If you'd like, Mr. Snyder, what I'll do, if you don't hear me well here, I'll, I'll come sit with you outside after and we can talk face-to-face if that's easier, but just
I can hear you clear.
Can you hear me okay? All right. Okay. All right. What, we did meet with Mr. Snyder several times. I agree with him on both intersections. It is not the best type of intersection to have. The Central Street and Hook Street intersection has actually been completely re-engineered. That entire area is going to be changed. So we did not believe that it was appropriate now to make a very expensive, small change when they're redoing that entire section that is planned on being done. It won't happen fast, Mr. Snyder. I don't want to make it sound like this is going to happen tomorrow, but that already has been re-engineered. We review, we have reviewed those plans that is being done as sort of a downtown revitalization. I'm looking at Ms. Ackley here, Sandy Ackley has done a lot of work with that one. The second intersection you were talking about, going on to Worcester Street from Mechanic, you're absolutely right. I agree with you. The town engineer has looked at that. They are getting a price to do that and it will be redone as you are saying. And I, I know I mean to make excuses. The reality is, I know, say like the engineering on the Woodstock Road that is just being completed as we speak, started about four years ago. So, we agree with you. I think Mr. Snyder is correct. It is not a good intersection. It, both are going to be addressed, but that's the stage that they're at right now. Does that help a little?
Well, it'll help a whole lot more when it gets done.
I, I agree with you completely, sir. Yes.
People just come down, use the merge. They either don't stop, such as one person did just this evening as I was coming up here. And all too often, I used, I live on Worcester Street, so I go by there often. I've even taken to going out over Charlton Street all the way down to Vinton just to avoid the Worcester Street merge. But that's not always possible. It's got to be done before somebody gets killed because that can happen. All it takes is for one person coming down the merge and not stopping and another person coming down Worcester Street, bang, there's going to be an explosion, there's going to be fire and people are going to get hurt. I don't want to be one of them. I don't want anybody to get hurt. It has to be done. I've been talking about this often at the Traffic Commission meetings. I can tell you right now, Dylan West, the town manager does what he needs to do. He needs to be replaced. That is my view. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything during Citizens Forum?
Good evening, Mr. Cowett, 82 Tullier Avenue. I'm speaking about the issue of the registry and motor vehicle. Well, about four years ago, we did the petition for registry and motor vehicle. We waited for Boston to decide what they're going to do about it and guess what? They moved it to Charlton. Are we going to wait for two, three, four months before we take proactive on this issue? Because I just feel if we wait for a registered motor vehicle or Governor of Massachusetts and some of these senators and representatives that say that we want our side the first time around, I, I wouldn't put my, my dollar, I bet on them because I don't know how they would react. Because confidence in them in the past was very low. And I just feel that we should look, form some kind of a committee or something, make decisions and start deciding what we're going to do about this issue because it affects 50 communities. And Councilor Denise Clements and I, we worked very, very hard for 10 consecutive days and we put our heart and soul in this issue and have the registered motor vehicle say to them, close Southbridge again, possibly close Southbridge again, after telling us about the big money issue. How can she speak with a forked tongue, which she does, but citizens of Massachusetts again, that involves 50 communities? And the reason they come to Southbridge, because they love the way the registrar, registry and motor vehicle is being operated. And if he feels, they feel when they come in here, they're served as a one-to-one and they're very sociable towards them and they feel welcome. Compared to city, you're just a number and you're waiting to turn. So I just feel we should consider doing something before it's too late because we waited the first time, wait for the wheels of Boston to turn and you know what happened? We were shot in the stick and I sure don't want to see this happen a second, a second term. Now, another issue is the dumpsters on Guppert Road for people to dispose of their yard waste on weekends. Is there a possibility of making sure that these dumpsters are cleaned by Friday afternoon? So anybody who wants to remove yard waste over the weekend has empty dumpsters to put in. Also, they're not monitored properly because people empty their vehicles of yard waste and they leave a trash all over the entrance of the dumpsters. And it doesn't take much, take a rig and a broom and a shovel to clean up after yourself. After all, everybody else is using this and it's a privilege to have a place that we get rid of our yard waste. And citizens of Southbridge, just think for granted that they don't care because it's not their property and they have an attitude, they don't give a darn. I'd like to see something about it, even if they have to have monitored day in and day out because people take advantage of a good situation. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cowett. Mr. Cowett, the chief will bring those things to your, the town manager's attention, just so you know, okay? Anyone else that would like to speak during Citizens Forum?
May I be excused?
Certainly. Certainly.
I have to go visit the water closet.
Okay, moving on to agenda item Agenda item number 10. Vote to appoint Mac W. DeFranzel Fire Chief as the Town Emergency Management Director effective immediately for an indefinite term. I have a motion.
Second.
Discussion. Council Manah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Could you just please clarify the responsibilities of this position? Thank you.
Through the chairman. It actually, on the surface, it sounds like a relatively, you know, okay, emergency management, gosh, you know, it's kind of what we do. But I can tell you, it's a very, it's a very comprehensive, time-consuming job. In this day and age, there's a lot of requirements on federal granting that in fact you are compliant with all of the necessary training and a lot of other pieces that fall into play with this. Unfortunately, Southbridge got a pretty good glimpse of this when we got hit by the tornado. And I know Dicky Cheslin, I don't think, went home for about a week and, and Dicky at that time was the Emergency Management Director and he just did a fantastic job in dealing with all of the state and federal components. So there's really a lot to it. I, I'm trying to paraphrase as quickly as I can for you, but there's, there's a lot of different aspects to this. Primarily, it's making, it's ensuring that the community has their emergency plans in place, they're appropriate, the training that needs to be done has been done. And again, a lot of these things fall into play and are very important when it comes to requesting funds for a myriad of different, different issues.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We have a motion. Roll call, please.
Council Clements?
Yes.
Council Landevan?
Yes.
Council Manah?
Yes.
Council Markucci?
Yes.
Council Moriarty?
Yes.
Council Nicola?
Yes.
Council Pellican?
Yes.
Council Vandal?
Yes.
Council Crasco?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Thank you. Agenda item number 11. Vote to reappoint Nestor Santos as the auxiliary police officer for a three-year term effective July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2016. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Council Landevan?
Yes.
Council Manah?
Yes.
Council Markucci?
Yes.
Council Moriarty?
Yes.
Council Nicola?
Yes.
Council Pellican?
Yes.
Council Vandal?
Yes.
Council Crasco?
Yes.
Council Clements?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Thank you. Agenda item number 12. Vote to ratify the contract for the cooperative heating oil bid for Peterson Oil for the town-owned buildings at $3.10 a gallon supplied and delivered effective July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2014. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Council Manah?
Yes.
Council Markucci?
Yes.
Council Moriarty?
Yes.
Council Nicola?
Yes.
Council Pellican?
Yes.
Council Vandal?
Yes.
Council Crasco?
Yes.
Council Clements?
Yes.
Council Landevan?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Thank you. Agenda item number 13. Council's Forum. I'll start with Council Clements tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of things. It's been brought to my attention again and it's good to have the chief sitting in because it's the time of year, noise, noise, noise. What's a citizen to do? What's expected of the police if a citizen does report something? Loud vehicles going by, blaring, base going, noise. To the chief.
Would you like an answer now?
Well, I think for the general population, you know, this
Absolutely. Just to clarify now, the vehicle thing, of course, that's quite obvious, you know, that's the motor vehicle enforcement. Another piece that some folks aren't familiar with, yes, we have a bylaw that says certain time of day, certain things, so on and so forth, but don't ever feel that you can't call at any time, any noise, any nuisance at any time of day that is unwarranted, you know, heck, you got a, a young person next door happens to feel that their music is the most important thing in the world and it's noon time. You don't have to wait till 10 o'clock at night. So if you get that kind of thing, if it's just a simple annoyance to you and it's bothersome to you, by all means, call us anytime and regardless of time of day or what it may be, we will certainly check it out and try and work with you to rectify that situation.
Okay, great. Another concern, and I'm not sure that we have any DPW here, but perhaps you can bring it up, high brush issues. By that I mean, you know, there are many properties out there. I know in the past we have, we have either gone and cut or sent a bill or made contact with landlords who have properties where the brush is higher than the table, which becomes a hazard. So I guess I'm not sure where that falls under at this moment, but again, that's, I've seen it, people have mentioned it to me. Just curious how proactive we are being in getting in touch with those, those property owners and, or if we're planning on doing anything about that in general. Or, you know, in the past we have, at my understanding, so just, just a couple of addresses. Do we report, you know, should a council report that? Is that being looked at?
I would say there's two things for the public. Number one, if it's any kind of a, you know those areas you're driving down the street and you don't really know, gosh, is this someone's house? Is it property? Maybe there's not a house for a half a mile kind of thing. I know that the DPW has been out very aggressively mowing those things back with that big machine, that tractor that reaches back. If it happens to be private property, that, I would suggest calling the manager's office directly. Some weekends through the summer, we do our Friday walks. We pick different side, pardon me, different areas of town. And what we will do is literally exactly like the counselor said. We will nicely request that if in fact shrubbery is into the sidewalk or, you know, so far out towards an intersection that it's dangerous, we certainly will make a request to the owner to do something with that.
Great, thank you. And I just also want to give kudos to, we have a new restaurant in town, if you haven't noticed, The Metro Cafe, which is situated right next to Subway. It's a cute little French bistro and I've been there and I just, kudos to anybody opening a new business in our community. We're very fortunate to have more options and I wish Jay and Marie Paul all the best and maybe you get a chance to go down and try out the new restaurant or any, maybe you need a drum. We'll get a new drum. And that's it for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Manah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Nothing really, I just want to thank Council Moriarty for his efforts and for getting me into shape this Saturday. I'm quite sore, but it was for a good cause. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Vandal?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I'm all set this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Council Pellican?
Hi, yes, thank you. I have a couple of things this evening. I suppose I, I'm sorry, my own handwriting is a little bit small here. The first thing is, is I'd like to say that I've been to the new town pool several times with my children now and I have to say, if you haven't checked it out, please go. It is so nice and we've had so much fun there. We've only gone maybe three or four times already, but we've had a very good time every time. And my only thing that I'd really like to work on perhaps for next season is I think that, I know I particularly have some health issues that make me very photosensitive and I need to spend some time out of the sun and I think that if we're asking the state to put trees at the new intersection we finished constructing, I would love to see a few trees, maybe down by the pool too. I'm happy they started watering the lawn down there because it was not long for this world otherwise, but it's a very great thing to have in the community. We're very lucky to have it and if you haven't seen it yet, definitely go and check it out. My other concern, I had a question about goals and objectives moving forward for the year. Are we going to have a specific meeting to sort of talk about a legislative agenda or is that going to be done at the subcommittee level or what? I know that I told you I was happy to be on whatever subcommittee you felt that you wanted me to be on this year, but I do have concerns that I'm not quite sure what subcommittee we would discuss them in perhaps. So I don't know if we are going to meet as an entire council to talk about our game plan for the year, but if, if not, I would, I would like to suggest that because I think it would be very good for us to do. That's a, that's a question.
More than likely, I probably would call a council of the whole meeting just specifically for that one thing. That way we're, the whole body's here. That way we can set it up and move forward.
Great, thank you so much. My one other concern, and I don't know if this is perhaps something that we could put off until that meeting because I'm not sure when the meeting was going to be, but, and I know that Mr. Clark isn't here, but I was very happy to see the letter regarding demolished properties and that we're going to continue that program moving forward. And that's something that I would really like us to all kind of have a more holistic discussion with together as a group because although I feel like we should still continue moving forward with this, I would like to take a look as a whole in terms of what we have around town that is currently uninhabitable and should be demolished, demolished rather, because I've gotten a few complaints from citizens about various buildings that could stand to be demolished that are not currently adequately secured. And as I'm sure the chief knows all about, vacant buildings are a huge problem in terms of crime, squatters and feral cats. There's any number of reasons why we should just be very careful in terms of reviewing what we have that could be slated to be demolished and making sure that it's as, as safe as possible until we have the money moving forward to take care of all the derelict property that we need to take care of. And it's unfortunate that there's so much of it, but it is what it is. And one other thing. I've had some health problems over the past years. I'm sure most of you who've been on the council with me know about. And I felt like I haven't spent enough time talking to residents in the community that I would have wanted to over the winter when I was sick. I'm happy to see the people who regularly show up at town council meetings, but as I watched the local campaign season unfold, and my husband's going to think I'm really crazy, but I kind of missed knocking on doors and talking to residents and trying to get out there in the community as much as possible. So I'm going to try to start having office hours. So if you happen to be in town during the day in business hours, I'm going to go have lunch with the hot dog guy on Thursday. So if you're in town during the day, stop by, I would love to meet you if I don't already know you. So, and that's it for me tonight. Thank you for giving me the time. Thanks.
Thank you, Council. Councilor Nicole?
Thanks, Mary. I don't have too much, but I did get a phone call from a, a resident who lives up at Woods, on Woodstock Road, likes very much all that's been done, but said that there were no speed signs up there. So I took a ride up myself, and that really wasn't the case. There are two. There's one near Genesee Street, it says 40 miles an hour, and then you have to go a good mile until you come to the old Notre Dame Cemetery, right before Notre Dame Cemetery, the little, little cemetery that's over there. There's another one then that also says 40 miles an hour, at which point I turned around and started back, and the only sign that I saw that showed any kind of speed limit on it on the way back to town was just about at the, what's the name, what's the street with Superior Bakes? Is that Ashland? Okay, right about there, there was a sign that said 35 miles an hour. So there are, there are speed limit signs. I know that the chief is on the Traffic Commission, and I know that it's like moving heaven and earth to do anything about speed limits, but we had a fatality up on Woodstock Road not that many years ago. A young gentleman lost his life on a motorcycle, and it was his fault. He was going way too fast, but that doesn't, that doesn't change the fact that he lost his life. And from what this resident was telling me, there's an awful lot of elderly people up on Woodstock Road that like to walk. So I don't know if you want to take a look, chief, up there and see for yourself what seems feasible. 40 miles an hour, because I was going 40 miles an hour, is way too fast if you're coming down Central Street, but if you're on Woodstock Road, it doesn't seem very, very fast. So I don't know if that's reasonable speed. I'm assuming that this person that, that contacted me was talking about speed well beyond 40 miles an hour, but it may, may be something that you, you folks want to take a look at now that the road's completed. And now that it is completed, it makes it even easier to think you're at the Daytona 500 on that road, because it's, it's beautiful, but I can see how you could speed on the road. So that was, that was really the only, well, one other thing, I, I also got, two people actually contacted me. I guess I'm more friendly now. Anyway, they attended the first of the concerts on the Common, and while they loved the concert, were disappointed that they were competing with a lot of flies because I guess there was a lot of dog poop on the Common. And it's kind of difficult to imagine that people would have the temerity to take their animals right out in front of the police station, let them do their business and not clean up after themselves, but I guess that's what's happening. So I just wanted to mention that that seems to be a bit of an issue, so we may want to look into that as well. And other than that, I've got nothing else. Two really exciting topics. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Councilor Moriarty?
I am all set tonight for...
Thank you. Councilor Crasco?
Yes, I, I just got one concern. I just want to encourage the, the citizens of Southbridge, or anybody that's coming through Southbridge, to be very careful now that school's out and families are actually walking in Main Street, our towns, there's, be, be, be cautious of the pedestrians. I'm on Main Street with the youth center, and I, I see it all the time. People just come close to getting hit, so I just, I just, voice of caution, let's, let's just be careful, watch for the pedestrians, because, you know, families are out there, people are walking, the kids are out of school. It's important that we take care of our own citizens and be careful with our driving. That's all.
Thank you, Council. Councilor Marucci?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Really, I'm all set this evening, other than to remind the citizens of Southbridge that concerts on the Common has started, and always great entertainment, bring your lunch here, bring a drink, and enjoy yourself every Sunday evening at 7:00 PM.
Six.
Sorry, 6:00 PM. Thank you. And I have nothing else.
Thank you. Agenda item number 14. Discussion of the next meeting date.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That will be Monday, August 5th, 2013, right here in the Pioppi Room at 7:00 PM.
Thank you. Agenda item number 15. Adjournment. Motion?
No.
All in favor? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.